Bird.
Here.
McGinn.
Here.
Stein.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Elsabak.
Williamson.
Here.
Okay, number two, approval of agenda. Any changes, Your Honor?
No changes this evening to approve all the roll.
McGinn.
Yes.
Stein.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsabak.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Okay, before we get going on our presentation petitions, we're going to swear in a new police officer tonight. Bailey Fariant, Riley, if you come forward.
They raise your right hand and repeat after me. I in your name, I am Riley John Ryan. And so I swear, I don't swear. I'll support the Constitution of the United States, that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Iowa and the Constitution of the state of Iowa. And I will faithfully and impartially, and I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability, to the best of my ability, discharge the duties, discharge the duties. Police officer, the police officer, the city of Boone, Iowa, and the city of Boone, Iowa. As now or hereafter required by law, as now or hereafter required by law. Congratulations. I'll turn it over to you. Want to maybe give a little introduction and. If that's what you'd like.
Yeah, it's Riley Brian. He comes from Ogden. We're happy to have him. He is in the military. Young man, and we'll get him trained good here early. And he'll go to the Iowa homeowners with Caddyman May. Before that time, he'll be training in house with us. And then when he gets back from the academy, he'll train further. But we're excited to have him. Definitely be important. So congratulations.
Good.
Don't forget, Don.
Well, it's brand new.
There we go.
Make sure family can welcome everybody to the lot.
Well, hurry up. Okay, get everybody up.
Yeah. Hi, you're good. Congratulations. Appreciate it.
Then are out of bed. Okay, number three. Presentation of petitions, other communications. A city liability insurance presentation. I'll turn it over to Bill and Hans. Dan.
Okay, thank you, sir. So over the past month or so, Hans and I have been spending some time together. Probably too much. Talking about our liability insurance. So EMC decided that they would come through the city and do valuations on updated valuations on each of our city buildings. Now, what we're talking about tonight is just city buildings. So when they did that, the value of the buildings, because of inflation, increased significantly. So there's three things that we're going to talk about tonight. The increasing values to the city buildings. And we need to have a conversation about the library itself because of the valuation and then deductibles. If you see up here on this screen, this is for the twenty-three, twenty-four premium renewal with EMC for our liability insurance. Other than the property premium increases were held to a minimum for twenty-twenty-three. We have a blanket property value for the entire city to give you an idea of eighty-seven million, eight hundred ninety-five dollars in some odd dollars. I'm going to ask you to skip to number five. It shows what some of the other buildings that we have, the city water treatment plant, fourteen million, some odd dollars. Waste water, thirty-two million, city hall, about eight million. And the library, we'll talk about it in just a second. As it shows here, most of the coverage, other coverage is the liability, law enforcement, crime, excess crime, commercials, everything. There's really no changes. So we are specifically talking about property that we own, which are the buildings. So the one that we really need to talk about is the library. Now, all the valuations went up for all the buildings, okay? The library is currently insured for just over five million, I believe. Five point five million. And the valuation that EMC did went up to eighteen million dollars, which obviously feels excessive. I think part of the reason for that is if you were to replace that building with the same material that's there, brick by brick, et cetera, then they're probably getting to the eighteen million. Or even on the inside, replacing the walls and what they have on the walls and things like that. I think is why they came up with the eighteen million. In conversations with Hans, if you look on your desk, you will see a handout called interpreting functional replacement cost insurance. So functional replacement cost is basically if some, let's say something would happen to the library and we need to replace it. The question is, what do you replace it with? Do you replace it with the normal, the stuff that's there, brick by brick and everything that's there? Or do the functional replacement is replacing with today's materials? So that's obviously the biggest difference in the increase of costs. So what Hans has come up with, conversations with him, where he is comfortable, is insuring it at seven million, five hundred thousand rather than eighteen million. And that would mean that we're going to replace it with the functional replacements, not brick by brick, so to speak. And I know Jamie's here and I know members of the library trustees are here. This would be the time as well, if you have any questions about what we just talked about, if any of you in the, in the audience do. Okay, looks like there are none. Hans, go ahead.
Yeah, I can certainly meet with, if you want to have a better understanding of that. What has happened, inflation is just, it's caught up with everybody and everything. If you look to your own personal insurance, you'll see that your valuations on your home have just skyrocketed. And they have on all of our buildings. And it's a result of the ratio and all the claims we've had and so forth. And they're, they're just reevaluating. They found out what all the claims we've had, hey, a lot of our buildings that we've got insured were way under, they're way under the replacement value. To speak a little bit to the library, the library, we found they did a specific inspection and appraisal to the whole building. And they found out we're way under on that. They, there's some historical value that they attached to it as well. But they came up with a replacement cost of over eighteen million dollars. Well, that building is thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and nine square feet, I believe. We just, I've got the appraisal here with me, but we did a lot of research on this. I spoke with people at EMC about it. And so what we came up with to ensure it on a replacement cost valuation, it's, it's going to be a lot of money. It's very expensive. So I proposed to the city to make an alternative to that because chances are that building were destroyed. We probably wouldn't build like kind equality. And we would build a much smaller structure than what we have. And I think in my research on all the buildings, I think that's our largest building in city limits. I think it's not the highest value because we do have, I think, one treatment plant is much higher than that. But it certainly square footage wrong. It's, it's, so it's.
How, how old is that building?
Uh, nineteen hundred, the cornerstone on the southwest corner of the building, so nineteen. So it's been around for a long time and it's been remodeled several times. So if you, of course, Jamie, would you know the last time it was remodeled?
They did the petition and remodel in nineteen.
Twenty-five, it's been twenty-five, twenty-seven years. So a lot of the interior portions have been replaced and updated to modern day standards. So the only thing I would ask the board today is all our other property in the city is under a blanket. We have eighty-eight million dollars in total blanket coverage. And going to a seven and a half, or we could even go to an eight million. For replacement on that, that would be the maximum we could collect on that one specific building. All the other building, go on a replacement cost up to whatever it may be. So that would be the only change. But when you look at our valuation for the other buildings, I think we're really, really in line now. I think we've, we brought them up to a standard where we should be right on the mark. So. And then our deductibles, we have deductible options of twenty-five hundred, five thousand and ten thousand. And I think Bill is.
Sure, but here.
It's.
Okay, so that's the library information. We'll come back to it and ask for some sort of decision by the elected officials. But Hans mentioned deductibles, so we'll go to deductibles. So currently, we have a thousand dollar deductible each occurrence on our property. I think a way to get this premium down is to, is to look at deductibles. There's an increase of sixty, of seventy, seventy-three thousand, seven hundred dollars if we leave it the way it is. If you go to a twenty-five hundred dollar deductible, it's an increase of sixty-six thousand. A five hundred, five thousand dollar deductible is fifty-six and ten thousand dollars is a forty-five thousand dollar increase in this area. So there is significant savings, about twenty-eight thousand dollars if you go to the ten thousand dollar deductible. Mind you, that's each occurrence, so if we would have a bad year, it could be each occurrence. But again, you would have to have three separate occurrences in a year where saving the twenty-eight thousand dollars, you break even. If it's four, about even, if you have four, then you're going to pay ten thousand more than you would. But, but you're talking about laying out the cash now, not knowing anything's going to happen, as opposed to taking a little risk, go with the ten thousand dollars. Deductible and paying less on the premium. And we obviously can't budget for something you don't know is going to happen. But again, that's the reason we have reserve. Well, a catastrophe happens. You have something happening like that. And we, we're talking here, Hans, just the buildings. Now, duratio, we had, we had damage as well as trees and everything else. That's covered under something else. Is that correct?
It's under another area.
Okay, that's another area.
Our properties, the contents and building.
Right.
They are deductible.
So.
Understand, one other thing, Bill and I discussed, this is, our property line is eighty-eight million dollars. It's a huge number. This is, this isn't like sharing a local downtown building for three or four hundred thousand. We're talking eighty-eight million dollars. We have a significant amount of property. So your deductible is a percentage of total insurable value is even at ten thousand is minute. It's, it's a very small number. So think about it that way. If we had a ten thousand dollar deductible on our homeowner, we'd all be gasping for air. But that, that's not what we're looking at here. This is, this is a whole different thing.
And you said we're at a thousand now?
Yes.
Deductible?
Yes. What has our claim history been over the past, say, years?
Well, over the five years we had duratio, so that raised, raised. Other than that, I think what we looked at under, it was pretty, pretty decent on the claims. Duratio really affect, I mean, we collected a lot of money.
How many?
Typically have property damage.
Right.
Buildings especially.
Right.
So we had duratio twice, one in August twenty twenty and one in December twenty twenty.
You were saying that that's covered under entirely different policy anyway.
Well, same policy, but different area in the policy. It's not covered on property. Property is building and contents.
Right. So when is the last time we even had any claims for property damage?
To our buildings?
Years ago.
Through the duratio, yeah. City shed had some.
Non, non duratio?
Non duratio, oh.
Yes, not since I've been in this chair.
Yeah, I can't remember.
So, I mean, it is a risk, but it's up to you, what you all feel comfortable doing. It certainly lowers the premium about twenty-eight thousand dollars is significant. Liability insurance seems to rise every year. So we try to do our best to keep those costs down and, and so that's kind of where we are. This, these numbers here include insuring the library at seven point five, correct? So the first question that, well, first of all, I guess, any other questions before I move forward?
Yes. On the National Register of Starred Places, does that affect us at all?
It's a deal. That's, in fact, that's a great question because that is the reason why they came up and did inspection. Because they started looking at pictures of our buildings. And we made, we spent a considerable amount of money to inspect that building and do the appraisal on it, just for what you just said, because they said, oh, boy. So now the decision is back to us as a city. If you want to insure it as a historical building and spend a lot of money in insurance, they can spend a lot of money on this building.
Right.
Are we going to, are we going to replace it of like kind and quality in the event that it's totally ruined? Now, on a partial basis, we're going to pay replacement costs up to seven and a half million dollars on any claim we have.
So if it was less than seven and a half million, it would still?
Yeah, still replacement. We're just not going to put up historical replacement. Let's say we had some art deco or we had some crown molding and we had something that's totally out of the ordinary. We wouldn't put that back up. We just put regular common materials up for regular construction in present day. So, but I can tell you, we could spend a lot of money insuring that building. I mean, we could. Put, I'm not talking north of twenty-five thousand per year.
Yeah, that's a lot.
More, more than what we're spending. And, and that's at a reasonable rate. So I, I, I tried to come up with solutions so we aren't investing a ton of the city money. That's, that's the whole purpose of my exercise here. Some of our other buildings we're going to use a lot, we have increased them significantly, like, like the water treatment plant and other areas, our city shed. Something we cannot, and we cannot live without it. We couldn't operate the city without it. So, and it just so happens that the city library is probably the most well-built building we have in Boone as well. Is extremely well-built. Has the highest per square footage cost.
Any other questions from the elected officials up here? Anything from the library trustees in the audience? Okay, so what staff is input that?
You know, the only thing I think that I, I maybe want to put out there is the historical designation. You know, I know there is a state office that I've had to check with when we did our roofie to make sure that we stay within the historical feel of the building. So I know that is a concern if we ever did, I guess, have to do some sort of. Not have it be within the historical feel of the building. Might not still be on the register. That'd be my.
Mention that.
Really thing I'd put out there. But no, I don't have any.
Likely destroyed that the city would build a one-story, less smaller building that would be much more efficient.
Similar to the current new build of libraries that. Yes, that is a very good point.
That's, that's where we're getting to. Kind of put the nail on it. That's what we're talking about here.
Okay. Eli, you good?
Yeah, did we have another area to cover?
Yeah, I want to cover this first. What I need is if the elected officials so choose, I need a motion to approve insuring the building at seven point five million dollars. With understanding that if we need to replace it, it'll be a functional replacement cost.
So moved.
Second.
All the roll.
Stein.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsabak.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
And then the second item, Eli, is the deductibles on which direction you want to go. I will tell you from a staff point of view, I was coming up, we're going to recommend the ten thousand dollar deductible. We have to pay it only if we have those, you know, the incidences or anything like that. Yeah, I wouldn't.
Ten dollars.
Motion for the ten thousand dollar deductible.
Thank you. All the roll.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsabak.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Stein.
Yes.
Thank you, Hans.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next up, public hearing for the consideration of sale of property is described below on the agenda. Is there any written comments? The public comments? Not this public hearing is closed. See resolution, two thousand seventy-nine resolution authorizing the sale of real estate as listed below on the agenda.
Need a motion? Motion to a second. Call the roll.
Elsabak.
Yes.
Williamson.
Bird. Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Stein.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Okay. D, public hearing on the proposal to enter into a development agreement with BJF Boone Senior LP and providing for publication of notice thereof. Are there any written comments?
No.
Any public comments? Not this public hearing is closed. E, three zero eight zero resolution approving and authorizing the execution of development agreement by and between the city of Boone and BJF Boone Senior LP.
So move.
Second.
All the roll.
Williamson.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Stein.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsabak.
Yes.
F, set a public hearing for March twentieth, two thousand twenty-three for six P M. on the proposed plan specifications, form of contract and estimate of cost for West Park Avenue and South Marion Improvement Project.
Move. Back on.
All the roll.
Bird.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Stein.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsabak.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
G, set a public hearing for March twentieth, two thousand twenty-three for six P M. on the proposed plan specifications, form of contract and estimate of cost for the water treatment plant controls and tel- telemetry upgrades.
So moved.
Second.
All the roll.
McGinn.
Yes.
Stein.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsabak.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
H, set a public hearing for March twentieth, two thousand twenty-three for six P M. on the proposed plan specifications, form of contract and estimate of cost for the Boone Fire Station addition.
So moved. Again.
Call the roll.
Stein.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsabak.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
And number four, report to standing committees. A, Policy Administration, Player Relations Committee. BJ, we've got a couple of items listed on the agenda and I'll turn it over to Bill and, okay, let those folks address those.
Sure, thank you, sir. The first item on here is discuss police wages. Chief Weeble is going to give a presentation on that. Come there.
All right, thank you. As you know, we are towards some officer. We've really struggled to find suitable candidates. We've really looked at a lot of things for recruitment and retention. And one of the things that we come back to is wages. This was most recently exacerbated by the sheriff's deputies contract that is going to be signed Wednesday, that which gives them a very substantial raise. In order to not lose or at least to do everything in our power to retain the officers we have and to elicit new applicants. I went back to on my budget and I looked to see if there's a way within our budget in order to raise our wages so that we were at least competitive. And I did find a few ways to do that. And it's kind of a two-step process. The first thing is, what I'm going to propose is right now, our officers work eighty-four hours every two weeks. They work twelve hours schedule. How they're paid for those four extra hours right now is through overtime. Because it's, because it's, it's paid at a straight time rate through overtime. It's kind of hard to explain, but what that does is it gives them, they're making more than their salary shows, right? So if I advertise the salary, I can't include that extra hours and that counts as overtime and it's not something that they're always guaranteed to get. If we were to change our schedule away from twelve hours. Now, it's been twelve hours since I've been started in two thousand and two. So there's no change, no plan to change. And we've looked at a number of different ways to look at scheduling and nothing works as well as a twelve hour schedule for our, our size department. So my first thought was if we include that extra four hours every two weeks as part of their base salary, then I can, then that increases their starting salary rate. It doesn't change their, their wage per hour, their salary per hour doesn't change. But I can actually include that as this is what your base salary is. So that's one way to bring it up a little bit. That still doesn't quite get us to where we need to be to be really competitive with the central Iowa applicant pool. So I, I looked at our staffing and we are allotted eighteen officers. I've been chief for a little over sixty, six years now, and we've had eighteen officers for all of nine months total in six years I've been chief. And those weren't all congruent nine, nine months. So in nine months out of six years, we've only had eighteen officers. So my proposal is to, to reduce our approved staffing level down to seventeen. Take that salary and split it between the officers below me. So in front of you, you have some, some salary numbers there. Those are comparables across central Iowa right now. It shows our current starting salary and then it shows what the proposed salary is if you approve my plan today. It also shows the top officer salary currently and the top officer salary should my, should he approve my proposal. And you can see that the first, our current stat, our current numbers are significantly lower than our competition for employees. I know some of these areas are within the metro and I understand we, we shouldn't be compared to what the metro is. Unfortunately, the applicant pool is so small for officers right now. We do compete with metro. There's officers, I mean, there's officers from Story County Sheriff's Department that live in Boone. If I, if I went to work for West Des Moines, I could stay living in Boone. So unfortunately, those are our competition. As, as much as I don't like to say that, but that's what we are. That's the, that's the truth of the matter right now. So my proposal and my request to you is that you approve this plan, take us down to seventeen allotted officers. That would give me two openings currently to fill instead of the three that we currently have. And then hopefully with these numbers, we retain officers, the good officers we have, because we have great officers, we just need more of them. So hopefully this allows us to advertise at a higher salary rate, which hopefully brings in more and better candidates.
Is there a save? I'm sorry.
What's the impact of going from eighteen to seventeen?
Well, because I, like I said, in the, in the six years I've been chief, we've only had eighteen for nine months. So we've been able to efficiently work and effectively work with seventeen officers for a long time now.
Is there any savings to the city?
Yes, because we're going to be paying less in health insurance. There's an eighteen thousand dollar savings in the city, even after the slight increase in four eleven contributions, there's still a savings of eighteen thousand dollars a year.
Well, put you on the, it puts us on the upper end of starting salary.
Yes.
Top three, but it still leaves us in the middle of the pack.
At the top salary.
At top salary, right?
Yes, sir.
Has the union agreed to open the contract?
Union has agreed to open the contract for this.
We'd have to go through a whole contract negotiation?
No, it'd just be an amendment that the union agreed to, that the city would agree to. No, it'd just be an amendment that the union agreed to, that the city would agree to, that if you so choose to approve this, we'll bring it back to a council meeting. I think a resolution uh for council to.
I think it's a great idea and I, you know, I appreciate chief doing that, reducing it so it added plus to the city. It's actually a savings. And it puts us competitive.
Just if I could mention just one thing on the to make sure you understand the authorized strength. So his authorized strength is eighteen. If you would approve this proposal, his authorized strength goes to seventeen. What that means is I have the authority to approve a hiring for replacement. It would now be at seventeen. In the future years, anything above seventeen, that has to come to council for approval. I don't have the authority to do that.
How many over the past five years, how many officers did we put through the academy that subsequently left?
That left within a short time of the academy, only a couple, and they were paid the that academy uh cost was paid back by the department they went to.
No brainer, I think.
Great, great job thinking outside the box.
Yep.
Thank you. This is this is big time.
And this should reduce turnover, right? I mean, hopefully.
That's absolutely the goal. I
That's what you.
I'm praying that it does.
Yeah.
We have lost officers from our department to lower paying departments, so.
Uh, we did have lost a few, yes.
Yeah. Is there any other note that that could be attributed to?
Um, I think we've only lost two to that. Um, uh, one of them, I think, had aspirations to keep up in that other department. Uh, that was a big part of him leaving. Um, the other one, I I don't, I can't tell you why he left. But that's the only two that have, since I've been here, that we have left for a lower paying department. So.
Well, the one basically took his dad's job.
Well, I I I, you know, I didn't even conclude that. Three then, so yes, three. One took us. One became the chief of Ogden and.
He. That's a that's a little bit of an a different deal.
Yes, that's a that's a different deal, yeah. Again, there's no actual impact or no impact negatively to the budget of what's already budgeted for moving forward.
Any impact as far as the number of vehicles that you have to purchase on a rotating vehicles?
No, so we we don't have a vehicle per officer like the like Sheriff's departments do. We have, we share a handful of vehicles. So yeah, there's no change in equipment.
Other than just raising salaries, do you have any idea for like recruitment and retention?
Yeah, well, we're gonna, actually, we created a recruitment and retention team within the department. Uh, Officer Olson's leading that up. And some several officers on that. We're gonna try and do a lot of different things. Um, we have to, you know, buy some equipment to to go to a lot more um uh job fairs and really get our name out there. So hoping to be as the Iowa State Fair as well, so.
Yeah, it is. Everybody had a chance to ask their questions of Chief Weevil. If so, then I think what Chief Weevil's asking is uh for your approval of of his presentation.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the this is.
I'll second it.
Call the roll.
Harmon.
Yeah.
Elsaback.
Yeah.
Williamson.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next, uh, oh, B J, sorry, it's your, oh, it's we've, Andre has got it. Okay.
Health insurance.
Health insurance, Andre.
Yep, I'm getting it.
So over the last several weeks, um I've been working on health insurance renewal for next year. Um before we even got started with I P E P, uh, I actually um reached out to a couple of cities at our size to see what they did. Um, and within about two weeks, I got a call from Steve Prater, the guy that our agent for I P E P, and he had the same idea, so it worked out pretty good. Um, I P E P, um, we've been with them since two thousand and twelve. Our initial savings was uh twenty-five point nine percent. That was a three hundred seventeen thousand dollar savings. And we went from Walmart to um United Healthcare at that time. I P E P has saved us about seven point nine percent on average over the last twelve years. I P E P's uh initial renewal rate um increase for this year or for next year for fiscal twenty-four, twenty twenty-four um is nineteen percent. Current loss ratio for I P E P is over a hundred percent, and that's why it's a double digits. Double-digit renewal with United Healthcare. Over the last three years, we have had over a ninety percent ink uh loss ratio. Boone's current loss ratio is sixty point nine percent. There's five groups in this I P E P pool now. We started out with eleven. And now we're down to five. Of those five groups, three of those groups are over a hundred percent. One's at a hundred and ninety-eight percent loss ratio. So two of us, two of the groups are carrying the the pool. What we've recommended, um Steve and I, is to look at I G H C P. They are a larger group. Uh, it's a it's ran very similar to I P E P. They have already um given us a renewal of nineteen point six one percent reduction. That's a savings of two hundred and seventy-six thousand eight hundred forty-nine dollars compared to our current rate. If you look at the, if you looked at the nineteen percent increase that uh U H C is recommending, and that isn't even um confirmed yet, that's just what they've thrown out there. Where I G A C P has already confirmed a reduction of the nineteen point six one percent. But if you include the nineteen percent increase that U H C is um uh has thrown out there, that would be a savings of five hundred fourteen thousand dollars over what we would have to renew at with I P E P. I G H C P has been around since two thousand and five. They have thirteen groups. A lot of them are cities and counties. They do not look at schools, and that is one of the issues with I P E P. I P E P, we are only one of two cities in I P E P. Currently, uh, there is ninety-six hundred members uh with I G H C P, where we only have nine hundred members with I P E P. Um, that is employees plus dependents, so that would be lives. Um, I G H C P has a seventeen-year renewal rate of three point oh nine percent. Where ours, a reminder, just seven point nine was the twelve-year average that we've been with I P E P. Um, the I G C per I G H C P current loss ra- ratio is eighty-six point three five percent with an eighteen-year uh average of eighty-seven point eight. Anything in the range of eighty to ninety percent, you're looking at a ten percent or less uh renewal rate. E B S is a third-party administrator for the press. Uh, they, E B S does offer a greater discount with I G H C P because they have more lives. They also um are are third-party administrator for billing and dental, and they can do that with I G H C Ps. We will need to add services such as Flex and Cobra and Walmart E O B services, because right now uh United Healthcare does our Flex and Cobra for free, and I P E P uh does not charge for E O B. Um, and E O B is our employee uh explanation of benefits. The increase for the Flex, Cobra, and Walmart would be three dollars and six cents more per month per active employee. So if um an employee does not take Flex, we're not paying for that service. It it would just be on those employees that uh that have Flex. So the current annual premium for I P E P is one million four hundred eleven thousand six hundred five hundred ninety-six thousand. The fiscal year twenty twenty-four renewal would be one million six hundred forty-nine thousand one hundred fifty. Again, that has not been set in stone. I G H C P is uh has offered a renewal of one million one hundred thirty-four thousand seven hundred forty-seven dollars. Below here, uh, I just outlined the changes. There are a little bit of a heartburn on certain things. Um, but I feel the savings is worth it. The emergency room, uh we currently pay a hundred fifty-dollar copay with I G H C P. It would be a deductible plus twenty percent. The out-of-state network. Currently, it would be based on provider, so you would have to look up your provider and determine if they're in network or not. With Walmart, this is a special plan. It's Walmart of Iowa. So anything outside of Iowa falls under the deductible plus the co-insurance, which is twenty percent, and we do buy that down from thirty percent to twenty percent. And that would include an office visit, so you're off on vacation and um you have a cold until you go into an office visit. You, it would not fall under your copay. It would be fall under your deductible. Prescriptions currently is ten dollars and twenty dollars. Under I G H C P, it'd be zero, fifteen, thirty, and eighty-five. So we're going from a two-tier to a four-tier. Urgent care is a benefit to the ci- to the employees, and that is because United Healthcare currently charges seventy-five dollars. And the city is is um reimbursing the employee for that. However, because our urgent care is ran more like a doctor's visit, they're only charging our employees ten dollars. Um, the Walmart, it does fall under the ten dollars, so that just simplifies our process. Exceris and labs, uh, under our current program, that falls under our deductible and co-insurance. Because the plan that we had last year or two years ago um fell under our copay, we are self-funding these deductibles and copays if they're not considered out of network. So they say you go out of the, go to McFarland over in Ames. You would be charged the copay for your op- your doctor's visit, but then you would also be charged your deductible for your labs. What we're doing is we're paying for that lab because that is how our plan was originally. Under the new Walmart, um I P H C P, the deductibles and the copays are waived, so you would just pay the copay for the doctor visit and you wouldn't pay anything in addition to the lab work. Again, as I mentioned before, the Flex provider we currently have is United Healthcare. Uh, we would need to switch that to E B S. And our Cobra administrator um is currently United Healthcare, and we would need to switch that to E B S. I G H C P is an increase in risk that has been accounted for in the premium through the partial self-funding share of the premium. Meaning that with every year, we set a percentage of our premium that we know is going to cut. Well, we don't know, but we project that we're going to get in um self-funded plans. In the past, it has been twenty percent. With this I G C P, we're going to increase it to twenty-seven percent, and that's because the deductible that we're buying through Walmart is at thirty percent, and our employees get twenty percent. So we're going to have to cover that ten percent difference. And then we buy a high deductible from even currently with United Healthcare, we buy a high deductible from United Healthcare, and then we buy it down to the five hundred, one thousand dollar copay for or deductible for our employees. So with Walmart, it's about, it goes from five thousand, sorry, six thousand to seventy-five hundred dollars approximately. So it's an increase of fifteen hundred dollars to our risk. It's not that it, we're going to pay fifteen hundred dollars for every employee, but there's that risk that we could do that. Deductibles and copays are waived for independent laboratory services, and I mentioned this already. Um, this does not necessarily include the hospital laboratory services, which we're having some issues with with the Boone County Hospital and and the clinics here in town. Uh, it does include Mayo Clinic. Uh, that would fall under the deductible and the co-insurance. So I P E P will meet tomorrow to vote as a group to join I G H C P. If I P E P votes to join I G H C P, the I P E P will no longer exist. So here are our options. We vote to go with I G H C P. We stay with I P E P. If I P E P members vote to dismantle, then the city would need to go out for to bid health insurance. Or see, we just open it up and bid out city health insurance and see what we can get. Staff recommendation is go with I G C P with a recommendation to reimburse employees fifty-five dollars for those that turn in a receipt for prescriptions that fall into the eighty-five-dollar tier. Staff would also recommend moving over to Cobra and Flex administration to E B S. And of course, staff will meet with employees and make sure that they're they're understanding the different changes.
Of course. And we we did this last one, we did this before, but we'll just talk about the eighty-five. Like, what type of drug or whatever does that fall?
So.
Everybody knows.
Yeah, so um those are typically specialty drugs. Um I got the list of all the drugs, not just the specialty drugs, about thirty minutes before the council meeting started, so I haven't had a real good time to look through there, but we will pass that out to the employees to make sure that if there are any out there that we are aware of those ahead of time. Last time, which was probably ten, fifteen years ago, we've uh switched to a three-tier. And we ended up switching back two months later. Uh, we had more people on the third tier than what we had planned, and it became a pretty big headache. I believe this tier is differently ran than that tier was because that tier took into account the difference between um the cost of it plus the eighty-five dollars. So um I believe that there is a difference. Again, I am asking that we help cover some of those differences um for those employees to bring it down to the thirty-five, thirty dollars that um if it was a a main tier.
It's the worst-case scenario.
Right, exactly. They would have to, there's no way of of getting around that. Um, it's a lot of the ability, like when you go to the doctor and we're buying down copays and co-insurances um and things like that, we can do through E B S. Unfortunate pharmacy is something where you have to pay right then, so E B S doesn't have that ability to reimburse or to cover that cost. Any other questions? I know that's a lot of.
Yes.
All in all, it seems like a preferable plan from the city's perspective and from the employees' perspective. I mean, there are some negatives on par. It seems like there are more pluses than minuses.
And staff is okay.
I have not talked to staff.
Well, your two-tier, the four-tier, one of them is zero.
Right.
So.
So the big concern is going to be the the eighty-five-dollar tier.
Yeah.
And we actually just learned about that Friday or Friday morning. I think I learned about that.
Well, even if you subsidize that copay, you're not going to come anywhere close to the.
No, Bill and I uh looked over um if we took a family of four and they all had a specialty drug that fell into eighty-five dollars, and we reimbursed them fifty-five dollars per prescription, it was like a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, so. And and you're not going to have that many and.
No way.
I'd make a motion to go to I G H C P.
Second.
Call the roll.
Elsaback.
Yeah.
Williamson.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Science.
Yes.
Harmon.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, public safety, David.
I know report here.
Building committee, Barry.
Um, just a couple of things quick. Uh, we did meet Waylon, and I went to a board of supervisors meeting and met on the bio landfill agreement that's coming forward, right?
Yeah, we're, it's being worked on at the present time. It's at the county's uh for their county attorney to review. Our city attorney has already reviewed it. And as soon as I get it back, I'll bring it to utility.
That'll be upcoming. Um, the current status of the U V project, we will be talking about that a little bit later on. And we will be having a utilities meeting March eighth, four thirty. That's it.
Right. Thank you.
Uh, economic development, Terry.
Uh, we attended the Main Street luncheon on February twenty-eighth, Bill and I, out at the cobblestone along with uh, the presentation was by Main Street Executive Directors and staffs of the surrounding communities. Really good meeting, very informative. Uh, so uh taking this project forward, I think that will be helpful. Uh, we met with Fox on March second to discuss the U V project and Fox's change request. And again, we were talking about that a little bit later. I met with Ames E D C. Discuss uh uh upcoming projects, including that owner occupied grant program. They've had several applicants so far, so uh as soon as that process gets a little bit further along, the E D committee will be meeting to. ED committee will be meeting to uh review some of those projects. There are two Ames EDC is working on two catalyst grants downtown. Uh, one at Athena and one at uh the old National Bank Building, I believe. Uh, those are two hundred thousand dollar grants and it's looking very promising for those, so. That's uh pretty cool, it's two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we're also meeting with um. Uh, tating of the economic development uh project out of South Park and Marion, that housing development. Uh, we'll get some more uh details on that and bring it to council. So uh I think that's about it, we're eating.
Thank you. Okay, number five, department reports, building official Dave. Uh, finance officer Andrea.
Just a quick update on the property tax uh budget update. Um, as you know, the state is approving reducing the rollback. Um, I have done some calculations and it's gonna affect the general fund by ninety-nine thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. I've been able to accommodate for that except for thirty thousand dollars or approximately thirty thousand dollars. What I would like to do is use cash reserves to cover that thirty thousand dollars. And then we'll make sure we cover that in the future so that we don't have to keep using reserves. Uh, in addition to that, uh ninety-nine thousand seven hundred and forty dollars, the rollback uh reduced our trust and agency fund. By eighty-six thousand five hundred and three dollars um. By going with IGHCP, which you guys just voted on, that actually saved us um enough money to not have to reduce anything there. Or to use reserves, and if you remember initially, we had planned on using a hundred and thirty thousand dollars of reserves. Um, to cover our health insurance benefits anyway, so we won't have to use any uh cash reserves on that. Uh, because we switched to IG. I'll have some.
Okay, if I could ask quick, just any concerns on the on the use of the reserves for thirty thousand? If not, we're gonna first that obviously you're gonna vote at the after we have our public here on the but but that'll be in there, just make sure. But if there's any concerns, please let me know now.
Now, it seems like a an appropriate situation to use that, that's what's there.
Thank you.
Okay, city attorney Jim.
Your report, your honor.
Uh, public works Waylon.
Your report, your honor.
Uh, anything under engineering, Bill?
No, sir.
Public safety chief Adams, not here. Uh, chief Weebold. Okay, city administrator Bill.
Thank you, sir, just an update to the elected officials on the city hall remodel. Uh, before you leave, if you would look at the down in the hallway, we talked earlier about putting a TV up there with all the city information, that's up and running. If you want to take a look at it, if you didn't coming in, please take a look at the auditorium floor that's been redone, I think they did a fantastic job. That's better than replacing it, I I think they made some huge improvements on that. Uh, also in the administrative conference room downstairs, we added a TV in there for training. We often have training in there a lot, particularly with the new software. Uh, and then what I would like to do or I'm planning to do, as long as the budget can handle it, is replace this dinosaur up here. And place three TVs in this room. Uh, so it'll be better view for everybody that's coming to a meeting, uh we'll put one over there up there and and then one up here, so that is my plan. Uh, if you any questions on it or concerns, otherwise uh. As long as the budget will handle, we're gonna be aboard and make those changes as well, that's all I have, sir.
We did go live on the building module for the new software today, so we did training um last Wednesday and Thursday. Uh, did some changes on Friday and sent all of our uh data over on Friday. And they went live at about ten o'clock this morning.
Before so good?
Yeah, it it's very quick.
Okay, uh, number six consent agenda, are there any items on the consent agenda that you would like removed and discussed separately? And if not, I need a motion to approve. Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Williamson?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elsabak?
Yes.
Okay, number seven ordinances, a wave second reading ordinance twenty-two eighty-five repealing ordinance number twenty twenty-six. Providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in the Boone Southwest Urban Renewal Area in the city of Boone, Iowa. Pursuant to section four oh three point one nine of the code of Iowa. Second, follow the roll.
Bird?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Okay, B, third reading ordinance twenty-two eighty-five repealing ordinance number twenty twenty-six. Providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in the Boone Southwest Urban Renewal Area in the city of Boone, Iowa. Pursuant to section four oh three point one nine of the code of Iowa.
I'm out.
Second.
Okay, call the roll.
McGinn?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elsabak?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Call the roll.
Science?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elsabak?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Okay, number eight, I have no comments, number nine, any council comments this evening?
Uh, just to. To uh elaborate a little bit more on what we did, we did have a really successful um. What we were calling a downtown boon event that was uh meeting with the Main Street staff and we had. Directors from Iowa Falls, Story City, Jefferson, Jewel, Grundy Center, Ames, and they all really shared a lot of good ideas. What what uh I think was important to come away from it was that this is not a short-term. Uh, project or process, it is long-term, the districts that have been in had been in for. And up to twenty years of uh working on Main Street projects, so good to know that it is kind of a one step at a time. Um, making progress there. So um we got a lot of helpful information and I think um will help us, we've got about a year and a half to. Pull all of that together and and we'll be needing all that time to work on it, so it's a real good day.
Any other council comments? See, public comments, right, it was not on the agenda. Eldon? Yeah.
Quite right, it was on the agenda. Chief Weebold's presentation. Uh, I've lived in Boone for a number of years, I think I'm out and about a lot, I've always considered it still considered going to be a safe city. You know me. President answer was what Chief Weebold gave a little bit ago, but that that's one position policy has been built for that. I don't know how many of the seventeen officers. I assume you have three shift. Four shift of seventeen officers. Much driving around the city as I do, I don't see it over a bunch of police cars around. I guess what I was suggesting that this become a priority item yet with the city administration council. But the mayor is to continue to try to find adequate funding. So that we can go above seventeen officers again instead of.
Thank you. You in the back?
Uh, Jason Bresowski. Uh, we wanted to be tonight so that we can be possibly put on transportation safety. Uh, the one um with regard to. Uh, safety within the highway thirty corridor out there. My brother just lost his wife out there in the traffic accident and. And my daughter and his daughter and we we've. We've seen too many accidents out with this town. I looked. At uh an example of parallel Iowa where they have two thousand fewer people than they do here in Boone. And they have. Ample stoplights there to slow the traffic down. I know the problem is. The problem is that most modern aren't aware. That you can't pull into the center, wait for a spot, you're supposed to wait for it to be clear, but it's common practice, I mean. I'm sure you've seen people doing it out there. Um, speed is an issue and then also compounded by added business. I also noticed that there's uh some land in front of a new school, it's my understanding. I think that's gonna have more traffic when the airport road. Just wanna take some time and help with some ideas to to mitigate some of this. It's high-speed stuff and then distraction, just not knowing what the laws are, you know, motors.
What would you think would help?
Uh, give me one stoplight in Airport Road. Uh, give me rumble strips uh heading westbound. Uh, so that people are well aware that they're it's slowing down. And then I don't believe we need one in Moffitt's, that's that new park that was opened up there. I would like to see one by Casey's and then replace the existing stop sign with the third ramp post. I think that that would visually slow people down. You've ever been at the uh the stop sign. You've got traffic turning, it 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 reminds me of a nineteen oh four video I saw of San Francisco. Waggons turning in front of trolleys and no one knew where they were going, but uh. Most people just aren't comfortable with it, by the way, they just sit there awkwardly, they have someone to move, I think. Uh, a light is well needed there, especially during times where. Their bases are open and etc.
Um, it hasn't been that long ago, the DOT did a study on thirty. And I'm not disagreeing with anything you're saying, I'm just telling you what they told us and the fix. They wanted to put roundabouts, there I'm talking what they suggested as a fix was either roundabouts. At Story, um Airport Road, even as far down as Montana. And I think they were even, the the one thing they do not believe in, I'll tell you right now, and it's their highway, it's Highway thirty. Is stopping traffic on the highway, any additional lights they're opposed to. Now, they did suggest closing possibility of closing like the one at Casey's where you go across. Instead, closing it, so if you're going southbound to turn to go east, you would have to. That'd be close, you'd have to do what they call a J-turn, go down, then come back around. And uh we can get you all that information, like I said, I'm not, I'm not arguing any of your points. Cause I I work on that end of town and I get it. Um, but they just, it hasn't been that long ago, they studied that whole that whole area. Roundabouts, we were a bit concerned about, I don't know if there's some people that ever leave town again.
Possibility of just reducing the speed limit, cause if you turn at twenty-five, they're gonna go thirty-five, but at thirty-five. Could they potentially miss the car, miss somebody and?
Well, it's less impact too.
It's an accident, but it's, you know, it's it's survivable.
Yeah, good help.
I think again, that speed limit set by the DOT for that section, however, um. Uh, I did get a grant funding for those flashing radar signs like you see in uh Luther's. Uh, they are have been ordered, we're waiting for them to come in and get the DOT permission to put them up, but they have been ordered for.
So it's gonna be forty-five.
Correct.
Sixty-five, fifty-five, forty-five.
Correct.
And I know you guys would do a great job of of monitoring traffic there. That should be it's.
It is.
I mean.
Yeah. But if they're not from around here, they just fly, I've been passed, they just shoot right by you.
Semi trucks.
Yeah.
Everything.
That's why we think these flashing speed signs will really help that, because it alerts people to your behavior system. Even though it's a porling highway, it is only forty-five in the zone, um but I I assure you. Nothing about a traffic potential at Airport Road thirty, certainly.
Yeah, I mean, very race time and it's just crazy.
Oh.
I don't think you go off in that area.
That one where you cross, go from like Casey's to go across and if there's, it it's something else, it it is. I agree with everything you're saying, I'm just telling you the DOT, we've had them in here and they did a whole corridor study from. And a lot of that was either, the idea behind the roundabout, they'd have to reconstruct thirty. Cause you have to slow it, you have to slow it down to go into a roundabout and their theory is most collisions are kind of a side swipe. Instead of uh, a- and I get it, that I just don't. Of course, it's their highway, so I don't really.
So you know, I also have shared my concerns about Airport Road with the new school opening with the DOT. Um, what they do is that I don't I don't know yet, but that I have shared those concerns that have warned them that there's going to be more. There's likely to be more traffic there coming this fall.
First of all, I'm so very sorry for your loss.
Yeah.
Hard to.
I always wanted to understand how. This is really speed.
Thank you for coming tonight, um but yeah, whatever we can do to depress the DOT on these issues and just make it the top of their agenda.
I've even thought about bigger signage that says reduce speed ahead for something, you know what I mean? Cause these out-of-towners, they just fly right by you. And they.
In- increase the visibility of the the reduced speed and I think you mentioned chief wanting to start the the slower speed earlier on.
Yes, I made that request, um and I did get a reply back from the DOT that they are not interested in doing that at this time. And they will reevaluate that after um the new school's built and to see how much traffic is there.
Yeah.
I'm gonna continue pressing that.
Please do.
I really would like that at the top of the hill.
Yeah.
On the east side.
Yeah, because that hill, there's so much, so little visibility when we're coming down through the there's.
Because I think there's gonna be a lot of extra traffic.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know how much schools there.
Yes, start back.
They they did not give me a reason um why they don't wanna move the speed limit further to east, they didn't, they didn't give me a reason. They just said they are not interested in it.
So move it back, reduce it down, since I mean survivability at thirty-five is gonna be terrible.
Sure.
It gets way more reaction on it and then all I didn't talk with the investigator. Um, for the highway patrol and basically, you know, he's already explaining to me all the stuff with you guys, but then you just go. And I really appreciate the increases getting involved in this.
Yeah, they're out there a lot.
I mean, the quickest, the quickest thing is if it's just a front of a sign that says twenty-five or thirty.
Or something, reduce speed, speed zone ahead. I or something that's kinda catches.
I think.
Get somebody's eyes where they look down and say, oh crap, who went fast maybe.
Cause when I'm pulled into a town I'm not familiar with, I'm not necessarily reading signs, I'm trying to figure out. What's that or what, you know, I don't know, I just.
Well, I think flashing does catch your attention and just a sign there.
I see something flashing that says speed zone ahead, reduce, you know, I'm gonna go, whoa. I don't know.
I mean, anything is better than nothing.
We will, yeah, we will continue to work on it and I could tell you this council, this council is in favor. Trying to fix what's going on there, so.
We can be the squeaky wheel, we should be the squeaky wheel with that.
But you're still welcome to come to any of our meetings and get on the agenda and whatever, so.
Alright.
Okay, just give us your names and um numbers, we can contact you and then we'll get you on any.
Appreciate it.
You bet. Are there any other public comments?
I've got a quick one, um we said majority of you guys are familiar with who I am, so I'll keep it brief and get the duty going, but. I'm Corey Rhodes, I'll be a candidate at the upcoming sheriff election on the twenty-first, I just wanted to come and address the the city council and give. Uh, ones that aren't familiar with me, a little bit of background on it. Um, first off, I'd like to acknowledge exploring the end of Officer Ryan tonight, I had the opportunity to have him do a ride along with me. If I've been to sheriff's office and talk with him a little bit as he was going through this night process. Um, my little little uh. But it's like a very square to what usual I really think that you can all make a a good young officer, so. That is, that is promising, promising to see, because that's alluded to in his um presentation is officer leaving for. Um, lower-paying job that maybe had aspirations of climbing within the department, I am that guy, so. Um, I'm eighteen years of law enforcement in Boone County. Sixteen of those years came with Boone Police Department right here, right? I feel a little bit better standing right here talking before I sat in the chair right up there, I was ruled by the guys, it was a little more intimidating. Uh, during my sixteen years with the Boone Police Department, I have served in all aspects of most of the departments. From patrol officer, uh our products investigator for a lot of years, went at that pretty, pretty aggressively and pretty hard. Got called upon to handle some larger general crime investigation that is needed. Um, says about their mal tuning, things of that nature. Come off that assignment and decided to turn my focus toward wanting to get in supervision and leadership within the department, within law enforcement. Um, so back to patrol, got involved with uh FTOing our younger officers coming on. And helping train them and start, like I said, change my mindset in my professional and personal life to start working towards supervision, leadership, grants, these trainings. Um, things of that nature, ultimately was promoted to patrol sergeant in June of twenty-one. Ultimately, was promoted to patrol sergeant in June of twenty-one by Chief Weebold. Served in that position for a year when opening came with the Boone County Sheriff's Office. And I saw at that point that, um, as I was heading for my aim and aspiration, maybe one day be the next sheriff of Boone County. Then it took basically six months into the job, right? But, uh, that that would be my best, um, move to make that jump and work within the agency. I've worked alongside of the sheriff's office for a lot of years, with the staff and, um, familiar with them, familiar with some of the good things, some of the areas that maybe need some addressing. And I wanted to get that experience from within, within the department as well.
Yes. What are those areas you see? What changes would you like to address?
So I won't honestly deal in absolutes and and always and right, but, um, we seen some like accountability measures, documentation, we need to we've got big transition right now, at least on the, especially on the deputy side, um, with obviously the retirement of the sheriff, the, um, longtime detective retiring and the relegation of our sergeant, so he's top fourth in our agency is, um, on the, on the administration and either side is is changing. So I, you know, see there's opportunities to be coming from a department that is been on accountability, structure, documentation and things, um, to bring in maybe a fresh, a fresh set of eyes to the leadership. And we've got a great staff, um, like I said, that's pretty kind of working for and wants to close. And that's why I'm going to pursue it at this point. So that's kind of where I'm, where I'm at. I want to open myself up for if anybody had any plans to make myself available after leaving this city, but I said I know about two thousand seventeen when I came back to the road, shortly thereafter, like I said, I started to make that, that mindset change and wanted to get into to be in leadership and and it's really taken that role seriously in my personal life and making, um, adjustments and take of information, um, that's different as well, so.
Questions?
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comments? If not, I need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Section twenty-one point five B to discuss strategy with council where litigation is imminent, where its disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the city of Boone in the litigation wastewater disinfection system improvements.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Mormon?
Yes.
Hulfeback? Williamson?
Yes.
Bird?
Yeah.
McGinn?
Yes.
Science?
Yes.